Call me in order. Please welcome the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any additions or corrections? Excuse me. Hearing none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Bills. There was one additional bill on our list for postage mail. Would we approve paying of bills? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve payment of the bills. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. We'll talk, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Deese?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Triff?
Aye.
Mike Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Anything over the ordinary? So, is there something?
No, we'll just have to do a letter of transfer again. We'll do that next meeting.
Okay. It's that time of the year?
Yep.
I did accept a motion to approve financial reports.
So.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the financials for a good discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Agenda. Anything to add? The motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. And the agenda is approved. Okay. Sarah, you're up first. Any special extension? Morning.
Good morning. Um, just a little update from us. The four eight, the new four eight year will open up um in next week, actually, yeah, next week. And we had a really good turnout for family fun night and lots of calls in for new families. So, we're trying to set it up with new clubs and um and see where where we go from there. Um, our, we are going to have our annual pancake breakfast on October 2nd. So, that's kind of like the start of the four eight week and all the four eight week activities. So, we'll be looking for those activities the week of October 2nd, which is four eight week. And uh, we did have our state shotgun shoot in Bismarck last month. We had twelve Ramsey County kids compete and Bradenburg from Ramsey County, who's the high junior shooter. So, we got a big trophy and I'm pretty excited about that. Uh, we do have some classes coming up at the Hope Center. Um, they've been getting a lot of produce in, so they're hoping to let, help their clients utilize some of that produce. So, we're in this Zucchini, Zucchini classes, they're getting taught of that. Um, salsa, herbs, and whatever else they um, they ask us to do. So, Lindsay Overmeyer is going to be helping with that and we're going to be team teaching over there um, within the next couple of months. Food preservation has really um increased. A lot of people are are um calling with questions, which is good because it's very, very scientific thing and uh, we don't want to make people sick. So, we've got a few food preservation classes coming up um in the area too. And um, I, we do test pressure pages up in the office, so we're trying to get the word out. Um, last week I tested a couple, which is good. Uh, one was not accurate. So, um, uh, we, we do offer that free service in the office. Uh, Lindsay, just wanted to let you guys know that um, she's been doing a lot of uh yard visits, trees, um, trees and grass and weeds, things like that. She's going to be doing some wheat minch soil sampling in the area fields in the county. So, she's got um, she's got to do in random areas. So, she's going to be doing that this month. Uh, they've been meeting for ground up, trying to line up speakers because that'll be before we go out too, coming up in early January. Um, she did a, a junior crop scout field day up in Langdon. Um, they've been doing, they have state youth and they're going to do an elevator tour in October. We've got soil sample bags for soybeans, cistnematode up in our office too. So, um, people can utilize those as well. And the dishwasher is installed and we've used it at least a dozen times. So, it's been awesome. We've been doing some food preservation down downstairs to get ready for some of the classes coming up. And um, just kind of getting everything nice and clean and it works great and it's in a good location. So, we really appreciate that. So, that's kind of what we've been up to. Does anybody have any questions for us or um?
Questions, which borough is that?
Bradenburg, uh, Briston and Trisha. That's their son, Trisha, in our office, our, her, yeah, he's, he's really been working hard. He goes out and shoots all the time and.
Sounds like you guys have been doing.
Yeah.
As always. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sarah, I do have one question.
Yeah.
So, they are, they're going to start a call patient thing. Does that start this weekend?
Gosh, I, what, if you want to call our office and, and um, yeah, I can't, I can't remember.
That's coming up.
I know, I know.
Okay, oh wow. Thank you.
Lot of dates to remember.
I know.
Blessings.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Roger, morning.
Morning. So regarding that dishwasher, the place to put it in, I don't know if there's ever one there to start with, but it was simply made for that. So, anyway, um, got an estimate here from Thompson's to replace five windows in the courthouse. Um, with COVID going on and whatever, you know, we just haven't kind of kept up with that. And I just have the one estimate for thirty-nine hundred. Um, I've had asked a glass shop numerous times to give me an estimate and never gotten one from them, so.
Which, which, where are these windows? Just randomly requested?
Uh, a couple on third, maybe four of them are on third floor, one on second.
Some of them once had the, the film stuff on them, you know?
Some of the ones, a couple of them are the ones that have film on them. Uh, and some of them just lost their factory seal. They just do, I mean, almost like one a year, we would have to replace. Just because they lost their factory seal.
Just really, just releases the gas then?
Pardon me?
This is releasing the gas inside?
Yes.
And then it gets all?
Yep.
Do we inside?
Yep, it's foggy inside them, so.
I'll move to approve the exception.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept a bid from Thompson's. Okay, uh, for the replacement of five windows in the courthouse. Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Yeah, alright. Hi, Roger. Wish everyone. What's up, we got Sean. Morning.
Morning, everybody. Okay, sorry. Uh, I've come here for a couple of things. Uh, that's for, this is for later. This is the one that we're doing today is for the joint training center. Uh, we've got bits from everybody local here, so we can look into that for the joint training center. I don't know if they filled you in on both that at all. So, okay, so the joint training center, we've got all the bits for it. I did talk to USDA about a grant. They will not do a grant, but they will do a loan. But when I did talk with them, they're getting rid of that program in Christmas. That's why I had this as a pressing matter at hand. If it's something that we want to look into, again, we talked about county and city sharing costs to help us pay for it. Um, it would be a loan for up to fifteen years. And roughly anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars a year for county and city, we pay about the same. Uh, this is all going into just repairing the inside of the building. It's all basic. And at the end, I also put in some window cops for kids and sure, things like that. They thought it was covered. But most of this is just to make sure that it is sealed and that we have the flooring done. We'll have, it won't be leaking in there. We'd have to put in gutters, we'd have to put in a storm drain and some drain tiles. One good thing about this though, I did talk to Otter Tail, did you remember that substation? And our name is number one on the list, so we can discuss with them that we can actually get that substation. That'd make a nice place for parking for regional classes. Again, there's no place for our search and rescue to have meetings, our correctional facility. Their officers have trained in the courtroom and put holes in the courtroom and get a little upset with that. So, most of their training is held there or at the ambulance service. Our police officers don't have a place to train either. So, this is going to be for every first responder agency in this region. Also sets it up for a regional training center with the VIA or anything else. So, this was just an estimate that we're looking at, costs, totals, everything that was involved in it. So, roughly around a hundred fifty thousand, a hundred seventy-five thousand for total cost of the building.
So, when you're talking regional training center, when all the sources come in, we get paid for that?
Yes, we reset it up so that it would be getting paid. So, this is basically, it's a private five-one-C-three, but it's related to county and cities entity.
That way income's coming back.
And we're trying to find a bunch of income, ways from income, but without a facility, it's kind of hard to have people come in and train. So, yeah, so we have talked with VIA and talked with them for it. They've got the training center on half-rotten. This will be one of the resources that they use for their EMS responders, fire. Talked with uh, the chief out there at VIA as well. Could also be a place for them to have fire training schools, kind of use that too. So, we have a lot of classes that could be scheduled here. And the income from that would go directly to the training center for decre, to basically decrease fees that we keep asking you guys for. So, I just need to know if you guys would like, we're going to go ahead and see if I can get a loan for this from the USDA or if this is something that you guys would want to go on half the city on and just go upfront on. Open to discussions. I apologize for the picture quality. My printer was not having fun with the uh, the colors in the back. So, everything kind of blurred out a little bit. But we.
Clock you're looking at, one thirty-five or?
One, one thirty-five. We're looking at about one fifty with, we had to add a few other things to it.
And then that puts it running?
That puts it running, yeah. Right now, the, the drone team is using it. That's where they keep their, their vehicles stored and their equipment stored there right now, in the garage. But that's all they're using for is, is the garage right now. So, it opens up a few other facilities. We already had a plan designed out, so it would be compliant with USDA, so we don't, we'd have to worry about that in the future. And everything's ADA compliant. So, yeah, one fifty, when you see in the bottom, there's some exclusions and kept out a few things.
Have you talked to the city about it?
That's tonight, five thirty. Yeah. I went back yesterday, but it was Labor Day, so you guys get the first bit, so to speak.
You think it'll be used by the?
Actually, it's going to be used all the time. I got the LECs at my facility, training at least two or three times a month, at least. And then we have more training that needs to be done, so. And that's just one entity, search and rescue. They meet in the garage, so that's.
They're meeting in a garage?
They're meeting in the garage. That's where they have the meetings and trainings, is in the garage.
No, you use a search and rescue?
That's, that's the building that they use. But there's no, there's, there's a, it's the garage for meeting place, so they can't have much there. And our, our fire departments are set up fairly well, but they don't like it when we come in and we're bringing out outside sources into the fire department, especially the road fire department. Because they're not, they're not staff twenty-four seven.
At the end of the day, what's the owning entity of this facility?
It's a joint five-one-C-three by all the first responders ahead of each agency. And it's not owned by anybody, but it's the board of directors with heavy emphasis on city and county. So, there's a member of every police, fire, and EMS from Ramsey County. I should say, Del's Lake. We didn't get started whether there are anything like that yet.
Other counties could use it or not?
Yes, and other, other counties will be able to use it. But if they, if they use it, they're going to have to pay to use it.
Have we reached out to them to see if there's any?
There is interest. Yeah, that's why I'm saying regional now instead of county. Because there is no place for teaching in those states. So, they've already come up here. We've, we've used our armory a couple of times for training. That's, that's what, that was our, that was our start. Uh, it's something that we'll have coming into this area quite a bit.
We use the armory, you got to move things in there and?
Yeah, all of our, even something as simple as me going and teaching first aid at the fire department, I have to bring all of our equipment out. Uh, which is not much of a hassle, but it's still a hassle. So, when we have all, all of our classes with everybody, it's, it's a hassle to bring our equipment all, all over the place.
So, one, I got a question, so. Like the first aid could, uh, would be an example, is like the dental office and stuff, you could put on stuff there and they could come right to the facility?
Yep, yep.
So, it would be something that we'd have to advertise a little bit, but I know they have somebody come in all the time.
Yes.
It would be nice, a few guys, it'd be nice to be able to go right there.
Yeah. For our small classes, they can come to ambulance service and I'm good for about twelve people. That's about it. And that's, that's our, it's the same room as this. So, we need to have, this is expanded for about fifty people. So, if you've been in the old ambulance building, that's, that whole front part is going to be just training facility.
You want to set this up for ten years at all?
Ten, fifteen years, whatever, whatever I can get for, for the USDA. But they stopped the program in Christmas this year. They will not have funds. So, she said if I wanted to work on it, I'd have to get, working on it now. So, if, if that's something you guys like to do with them, I'd just like permission to start working on it.
Just to see what's available?
Just to see what's available.
See what interests you. Yeah, I think that's, I mean, that's reasonable. Yeah. Go down that hole and, and see what the, how the city feels about it too. If they're open to it, I think it's something that we should look at at least. Moving, being a very good facility, used a lot.
Yep, and hopefully, what we'd like to do eventually is have it paid for itself, or still have the revenues for that. Then you guys wouldn't have to worry about having to finance fifteen thousand every year for it.
Oh yeah, the hope would be is if you could get other agencies, you know, and give them a reasonable rate, but still at the same time function enough, you know? Get that money out of it, that you can keep the place running, keep the place running.
If this is a regional training center, like for the area, I think you could probably reduce enough money to keep it.
I would rely on volunteers to run these ambulances all the time, country, so. Got a good facility for them to train in, I could encourage people to volunteer more.
But that would be the next issue.
That only makes sense to me. Well, even if it costs a little bit of money, it's money well spent.
I could, any volunteer service, even if I can get money put up for training. So, there's, there's money that I can get for them.
Okay, well, that was in my, I'll fund it. We got an issue up in Edmore, County, you know?
And, and Hammond. I did go up to Hammond and I did address Edmore. Um, Hammond, they get an AD to raise money for that, and I'm going to be doing first aid classes up there and AD classes up there. Nice town hall forum. Uh, guardian flight with me as well. And just gave reality that the helicopter will be there and I could fly faster than any ambulance service will be. So, we just, we visited with that a little bit and I tried to get Hammond to see if they could do a quick response unit. No interest in that, but they will do first aid. So, they will be, so I'm going to do a Jewish class of first aid and CPR AD up there. So, I'm trying to get them going and I'll get them first aid kits, because they have some medical people up there as well. So, I'm working on that. I did talk to Edmore. Um, they lost every single person that was going to take the EMT class. Uh, so all their future volunteers are not interested. So, uh, they're not, one of their members is non-screaming the state right now and um, I gotta go up and talk to them again. We might have to make Edmore do a quick response unit. Uh, talked with Candy a little bit. Uh, it was Michigan that was doing the tax districts of Nelson County. So, this nice piece of information, I have all this glorious paperwork that I gave with all the century codes and everything. And that's for you guys just to look at. That's for later, but I did talk to a company that specializes in setting up tax, tax districts for EMS. They're presenting to my board about formulating a tax district just for EMS for income. Um, we're at the point now, I just saw this morning, that they're going, federal government's going to make our fast food companies with over a hundred chains to raise minimum wage to twenty-two dollars an hour.
That's just California.
Is it just not that good? Oh. I was having my coffee, I went off to rate, now what? Uh, I'm having problems filling out my own ranks and going outsourcing towards South Carolina and North Carolina, Georgia. They're paying their paramedics eleven dollars an hour. So, we're trying to draw from there because there's nothing left in North Dakota. There's only one or two services that are fully staffed at this point. I think Fargo's down thirty medics, that they're gone, his market's well remaining. So, everybody's fighting for what's out there and there's nothing in North Dakota. And I think I've got four on Montana and four on Minnesota that are available. The rest of them are from down south, so we're really pushing for down south, that twenty-two dollars worth of risk. But um, we're trying to get our staff up. With that being said, we've been looking at a few different options to make sure that we stay in existence. We have never taken taxes from the citizens. And if we continue on, we will be functioning, but it's going to be at a bare minimum level. We're looking to expand our services. I already talked about community paramedic programs where we go out and help the community, free of charge type of thing. Um, we're also looking at the metan, I've talked about that before. So, we're looking at a bunch of different programs for that. In order to sustain where we at now at a level of advanced life support, we're going to have to get help from the outside source. So, we're looking at getting tax money. Uh, my analysis went, I, I left you an inventory list in very back. My analysis went from costing a hundred thousand dollars to two hundred fifty thousand a piece. My cardiac monitors were twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty-four thousand a piece. I do write grants, reach one of those, and I'll find out here shortly if I got a grant for two new ambulances and some cardiac monitors, but it's uh, they're all fractures. Um, so what I gave you is the century codes. Uh, first one is fifty-seven, fifteen, fifty, very front page, I underlined it for you. Uh, what it does talk about is a county emergency medical service levy and the ability for the county to budget up to ten percent of our house replacements. Something for, for us to look at in the future. Uh, right now, we're writing our cost for our equipment is only, is a million dollars for us to have equipment. That's not the medical supplies, any of that, so our cardiac monitors, our pumps, our ambulances, everything. Uh, even our uh, our laryngoscopes, things like that, but not our medical supplies. So, just in, in the very back is how much it costs for us to have everything running. And with that back cost, that was with uh, ambulance that's worth fifty thousand dollars that we're going to get rid of here shortly. So, that's another two hundred fifty thousand dollar address. So, we're looking at that, and I talked about the tax district versus just a Ramsey County levy. So, it's something that we need to discuss. I had a letter that was also printed off there going for tax district versus a county levy. Uh, which one is more feasible? Right now, most of them are going towards the tax districts. Um, we're already set up for it. We're five-one-C-three, I have a board of directors. We may need to have a county member appointed to it to oversee it. Um, but that's kind of our policy, it's supposed to be for the past fifty years. Uh, we're still looking at it and we're going to have them come talk to us to set up a tax district. And then we'd have to take to the votes, take to the people for a vote how much we need. And we're just going to go with this kind of cost to keep us running. I'm not going to go for extra having to get them out of what, what taxes. Um, you can see what the other counties were getting. That was two thousand nine, by the way, of what everybody was getting. These are grand forces getting about a million. Uh, tax district will help us if Edmore votes quick response, if Hammond's in quick response, if there are a tax district. Right now, Hammond, I'm for kind of bill the services to help them out. This will set it up so we can actually help them get other, other pieces of equipment. Uh, an SUV, used SUV, for example, we can get them set up for a quick response unit or a first aid unit. So, it'll, it'll help us out with all the other communities as well. All the training I can get for them for free already, but it's going to help our cost. So, that's just some food, some food for thought. Did anybody have any questions? It's been a busy summer.
There's a lot of, there's a big alcohol in the county, isn't there?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's nothing on the county, so we've been driving around. Actually, guardian flight just did a two-hundred mile radius stops and we're looking at landing zones, ready to place for our helicopters. So, we're working on that if there's something, we'll say a combine on fire, somebody's in the vehicle, there's somebody caught in the grain bin. We've had headache with uh, I have to call Utah. My, my dispatchers call Utah, Utah calls, calls our guardian flight. They go out to see and have to figure out where the scenes at. We're cutting everybody out. So, we have somebody stuck in a grain bin, they're going to get torn up the same time we are. We're running out of lines, so we're already set up. So, we did that with Hammond as well. We're going to do that for the whole county. So, if they're not needed, they're going to go away. If they're needed, they're right there. Because it's, it's going to take us hours to get them to ground force, if that's where they need to go. So, versus them for forty-five minutes, this is a no brainer. So, I have a meeting with them tomorrow to finalize everything, so we should have ninety zones set up. So, you'll see, you'll be hearing the helicopter a lot more. At least they'll be flying out, but they don't charge. When they go out on these calls, they're going to go fly and land. If I hit there and go, no, he's, he's stuck, he's still, they're going to go back to the, the station, so.
And you are able to buy insurance now for the flight?
Yes, we are. There's a membership for that. If you guys get that on the mail.
Yeah.
That is a legit thing now. They, they had that, no surprise, Bill, that was, was enacted this year. They do have a membership. It's, I'm going to plug it. It's eighty-five, I think it's sixty-five dollars, eighty-five dollars a year for a family.
Yeah, it's unbelievably reasonable.
Yeah, for, I mean, that's, that's cheaper than, because we're cheaper, but we're cheaper also in the water. Fifteen hundred dollars versus sixty thousand dollars, that's.
Exactly.
Oh, your fifty dollar share per family?
For family, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Get that for a member. It shows up on my desk and I pay.
Yes.
So, and if you guys, when I have a stack of that information, if you guys would like that. I'm not, I don't work for them, I'm just helping out.
I have two questions. What's, what's our Lake Region ambulance's total overall budget every year?
One point nine.
One point?
One point nine.
One point nine? And what are we, you say that we're having problems getting medics. What are you paying for opening wages out of curiosity?
Starting wage is usually around one point one, one point two, so when they said that, I was like, oh god. So, and that's for a brand new paramedic right on the school.
Okay.
We do have a sliding scale. Uh, I'd be happy to show you that scale.
Well, I'm just curious, you know, twenty-two dollars isn't a horrible wage to try to attract somebody, but.
No, and we, we all that by fifteen percent.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I'd say I just find it interesting after looking at this list, I mean, this is, that, ten years, thirteen years ago, you know? Forty, forty different counties or entities were taxing for EMS services.
Yeah.
At some different level, you know, under some different levy of degree, so.
Well, my board of directors have been pretty adamant not wanting to have taxes. And to save, it's been saving our county for years.
Yeah, and that's, I think it's appreciative from the county, but at the same point, it's like, well, we need quality EMS services. If we have to pay a little bit more, then it has to happen.
Yeah, we went from three hundred forty to about a hundred sixty ambulance at the time. And it's going to get less and less. So, we're looking, we talked to regional, it'll probably be Lake Region will be regional. And we'll have Nelson County, we'll have county ambulances.
Yeah, we had, well, it's just the structure of all things that happened in North Dakota with this, not just North Dakota, rural America. There used to be volunteer services in every small town and everything's just kind of contracting to the larger communities. As far as the, like the guardian, how much of order does that take out for you guys if they get these landing beds?
Uh, very little, very little. Yeah, yeah, so they only take the very critical pageant space, so. Um, they take maybe one, two flights a week where we're going two or three, four a day of transferring to, well, mostly not to Fargo, so that's why I'm saying two or three, usually it's four or five. But ground forces have been full, minus been full, so we can go to Fargo.
If you had to go any further than that?
We don't go out of state anywhere.
Go to state?
No.
I know, because they wanted to divert here for quite a while and they were ramping people to buildings and all of this.
Yeah.
It's, it has nothing to do with beds as much as it has to do with. There's just no staff.
There's no staff.
There's no staff to build.
Just for comparison, we're talking about volunteerism. Our EMT's basic level for it is the same amount of schooling for a police officer. And our paramedics now is about the same as our.
And it's a volunteer job?
It's a volunteer job.
So, it's a huge commitment for somebody to make as a volunteer. You got to be the right person to do it too, because not everybody can do that well.
Should probably address the training center. Oh, yeah. Uh, you think uh, just going ahead and giving our, okay, support and securing the USDA loan? Is that what you're currently looking for, Sean, or is?
Yep.
I'd go ahead and make that motion, I'll be.
Tell Sarah.
Support their efforts and, and I think if, you know, it comes down to it where the county has to budget ten, fifteen? Support their efforts and, and I think if, you know, it comes down to it where the county has to budget ten, fifteen thousand a year for that training facility, I think that's something that we'll do when that time comes, but.
Absolutely, we might do it.
Yeah. Very, very much needed, so. And appreciate all your work and effort.
Yes, very much. Okay, so we have a motion in a second then to support the ambulance service attempting to get a USDA loan for the training center, regional training center. And Sean will come back with you guys and all that kind of stuff. Okay, further discussion on that motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Go same side. Motion carries. Appreciate it, Sean. Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Kevin, morning.
Morning. Okay, start off, we'll go over our whole projects. Grabbing on Ramsey Ten, I did talk to Gowan about that and they're aware that the deadline is September fifteenth, but they haven't set a date when it starts. Ramsey Four posted, start grabbing at this morning, so they'll get it done before the deadline. And then the paper patches, they told me they wouldn't be able to start those till sometime in October, but we're still on the list to get done. Normally, we don't pave after September fifteenth, but I think we should probably. Same thing happened last year, they weren't gonna do it till October, so we put it off, so I'm thinking we should just do it and then see how it turns out. But just here where October is when Strata is saying how it happened.
As long as we got heat, we should be good, right?
And that's another thing, they always won't let them pave if it's too cold or too bad, you know, that type of thing, so. You guys, do you want to add about projects that are coming up or going on?
Um, sure, I guess I ran through, I guess it says at the last meeting, but we're gonna be under budget. And I, I'd forgotten that the state, that the, the car system pays the mobilization automatically and that there was a portion without them to pay, so it's gonna be about fifteen thousand over, but that included that thirty-three thousand dollars incentive, so that's felt pretty good. But we're able to manage costs on that pretty well. Ramsey County Four bridge, the final plan went in a week ago, so that'll be at November eighteenth. So it should be ready to go next year. Lots of should get cast hopefully through the winter. At least one of the suppliers has an indoor facility now for making those. So that'll be good. And then as far as the construction engineering on that, do you guys want to put out an RFP sometime before that for services? So you can get federally to pay for those. I think that's it on those projects. And Kevin, I guess you got it coming up in your agenda, federally program.
So many questions on our projects that we got going on or coming up. All right, we'll keep open and, we got the invoice from the DOT for our share, the bridge inspections for this year and it's five thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy cents. Need a motion to pay that.
Okay, a motion in second to pay DOT, NDOT fifty-one ninety-six seventy for bridge inspection, our share of bridge inspection. Further discussion. So you got a local please.
Brett?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Dseth?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And along with that same invoice, they sent us a, a form, a piece of paper that we need, that says where we get our local match from. It's not coming from federal dollars, whatever. It's so, it comes from our real estate taxes. So we need a motion for the auditor and the chairman to sign that statement also.
Move to approve auditor. Chairman to sign.
We have a motion in second to allow for signatures on certification of local match. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Go same side. Motion carries.
And then we got our invoice from the DOT for our share of Hampton project, the paving project. This isn't a final final, but this will be the biggest one of the, of the ones we do get from them for our share. It's two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, ninety-nine cents. And I did have, I do have to have my budget, so.
So.
Motion in a second to ban DOT for our portion of County Three for the project. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Dseth? Aye. Brett?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we got an invoice from K L J for the construction engineering that was done on our paving project on Three. It was twenty-five thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. There'll be additional bills for the inspection on that, you got to do, but they're still within our contract estimate. They gave us one time ago, we signed the contract, so we need a motion to pay that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay K L J for the construction engineer on the Three, North County Three paving project. Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor please.
Bulk?
Aye.
Dseth?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we got some culverts from True North Steel. I guess I didn't put that on my agenda, but it was True North Steel for sites on township roads that are our responsibility to replace. And that cost was seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds, couple of seconds, but we'll, we'll coin. Motion in a second to pay True North Steel for culverts, for township roads. Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor please.
Bulk?
Aye.
Dseth?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Lightman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
As if the last bill, we got some more cutting edges and some filters for button machinery. And that total was seven thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and sixty-one cents. Motion to pay that.
Motion to pay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay our bill of butler for filters and cutting edges. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor please.
Brett?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Dseth?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Lightman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and the Rapid City Local Roads Conference is October eighteenth to twentieth. The cost is hundred and twenty-five dollars per person and the rooms are eighty-nine dollars a night, it'll be two nights. And I'd like to take Jason long this year, just sort of to kind of introduce him to the process. So the total of both of us for auto state travel will be six hundred and six dollars. We'd be driving the county vehicles out, so it'd just be the gas.
Move to approve, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, excuse me, to approve of state travel for the Local Roads Conference in Rapid City for Jason and Kevin. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side. Motion carries.
And I also need to order some more cutting edges for motor builders. Just to be clear, when we bought that semi-load of edges over for winter use, so these ones they order now are still for summer use. And they're gonna cost just under seven thousand. And this should make it through the rest of the summer.
We got a motion in a second to order hopefully our last load of cutting edges for the, I was gonna say summer's done, isn't it? And every day was yesterday. But we still got, still got road grid and to keep road grid in check.
Two more months.
Two more months.
Oh, three more months.
Oh. We're gonna get to Thanksgiving without these, no, I like it. Okay, call. All right, we have a motion in a second to order cutting edges. Further discussion.
Catching up.
Great, that's right. No discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side. Motion carries.
And I did get two quotes for the chips for next year. And Strata had a quote for eighteen sixty a ton. And that's delivered in Devil's Lake. Gowan, they also gave me a quote of twenty-three, twenty-five a ton, also delivered, delivered to Devil's Lake. And I need about twenty-seven hundred tons, so that cost will be, using a road grid will be fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Motion, I need a motion to accept the low quote.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the low quote, excuse me, from Strata for checks for next year's chips in the project at eighteen sixty a ton. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Close same side. Motion carries.
Our new pickup from Lake Chevrolet showed up finally. The price has gone up just over fifteen hundred dollars. The original motion we made was thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. And the new price is forty thousand, five hundred, plus there's a hundred and ninety-nine dollar delivery fee. So the total was forty thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine. I don't know, I think if we were to start over and bid a new one, it would end up being even more than that, so. I guess my opinion is probably, I'm a fair, but the price of everything is going up. So that's probably about where we should be. So I guess I'll leave it up to you guys, what you're finding. We never did actually sign a contract with them, it was just an agreement, so legal paperwork, we don't have any of that. How much of a choice do you want to pick up?
It's just enough inside.
Like I said, I think if we start over and bid again, it'll be even more, way more than that.
How many, how many bits, do you recall how many bits we had when we put it up to this?
Well, of course, you know, one guy owns the mall, so we had a quote from Dodge. Ford, Ford wouldn't make, Ford wasn't making a, they weren't making a three Ford and Chevy. And Chevy was the lowest.
So does, any idea, does this fifteen hundred dollars put us over the top of the Dodge bit, just out of curiosity?
Oh, good question, I don't know.
I don't think it really matters.
Yeah, I would guess so. I mean, it's, everything's going up accordingly, if that makes sense.
Well, yeah, I mean, the Dodge one would probably be another fifteen hundred bucks, could show up today too.
Need a motion or?
Yeah, we need a motion to pay the additional money.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
We need it, right?
Yes, we do, yeah. It's in the budget.
Might be, be next year sometime. We could take it, so it'd probably be forty-five percent, forty. All right, we have a motion in a second to allow for an extra, or an additional fifteen hundred dollars on the new pickup from Lake Chevy, correct?
Do you have a C I? Well, it's Lake Chevy, I already have a C I.
Further discussion on that motion. Hearing none, we're not paying.
Most of the delivery ends up being forty thousand, sixty-nine.
Forty thousand, okay. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side. Motion carries.
Okay, then we need to update our federal aid project form that we turn in on October at the convention. I think I gave you guys a copy that they sent me, but we need to make sure we get our paving project from twenty-twenty-four added on there. And also our ER projects on the third column, our ER projects are not listed yet, so we need to make sure we get those on there. Paul did give me an estimate for our paving, well, our twenty-twenty-four project is a paving project on Ramsey County Three from seventeen south for nine miles. And, you know, we, we're, we're looking at shoulder widening on these, so, so this estimate does include some shoulder widening. You know, as we look at it, it might go down, it might go, but this is a fairly close number, so we'll, we'll put the estimate on this sheet of two million, seven hundred and sixty thousand. And of course, our federal aid won't be enough, but we still have.
Go for money, huh?
I'm afraid I'll. I don't know, money we can use. If our federal aid isn't enough, so. Just to keep that in mind, our estimate for that total project will be two million, seven hundred and sixty thousand. And ER projects, we, we have the estimates for them also, but we just need, they haven't given us, they always assign us a, a project number, well, they haven't given us project numbers yet either, so. We're, we're talking back and forth with them now, trying to get those project numbers before the October meeting, so we can turn all this down once.
And the guy that gives those is gonna be on eternity in jail for six weeks, so I don't know.
Guy, by the way.
Anyway. Yeah, better than me.
There's only one guy in the whole place that does that?
Well, maybe, yeah. Right, I don't know, I have, yes.
So, but, I mean, just a heads up, we need to get this done. Probably at the next meeting, we'll have more information. A lot of, have it ready for a signature, then. But if you guys can think of anything, any other projects that we need to get included on here, those are the ones we thought of.
What, what are our ER projects?
Well, it's like our, our roads are washed out and we had to fill it with ground and they're, they're not, tired right now.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's our emergency type projects then?
Yep, right, so these would be permanent, what is there, three of them, four, or?
The, the permanent emergency fixes?
Yep, exactly.
Fixing the emergency fix.
Yep.
Yeah, Carrier Road, County Four, north of the bridge, twenty-ten. Just west of, there's one at twenty and then one on nine.
Yeah, ground on nine. Yeah, I think, you know, the color sizes are gonna change on all of them, so. Have we got any of our box culverts in that we've tried to get? No, well, that's only going to bid on in a few months here, in November. So then, after that, it'll be a little against the bed type of thing, isn't it?
So there's still a shortage on that?
There is a shortage, but they did build the indoor facility now, so they can run all winter long now, which is gonna make a difference.
Right, but then there's a lot of great projects out there now, so additional funding from DOT. And a lot of them are a hundred percent funded too, with the federal fund that came in, so there's gonna be more demand too, so.
Uh, should help.
Yeah, I think we're all helpful. I mean, then bidding in, in November.
I think in February.
Right, that'll give more time to get them.
Yeah.
On the list.
On the list and maybe, hopefully.
So we're hoping that the, what is it, six, six ninety or something is gonna be a decent number?
Also, I think, actually, if I asked him, that was a little, my final estimate was a little bit higher than that.
Okay.
On reason I ask, just because we just did a temporary fix on some of these sites, right?
Right.
Because if we get a lot of water and spring again, are we gonna be in the same situation?
There'll probably be culverts there. Huge grass, they are huge pools.
Yeah, all of them are probably be culvert, regular culverts, not large culverts. But everything just temporarily fixed right now. Yeah, with smaller culverts than what, what was there before is what's there now, right? I think you might have looked.
Yeah, I don't know. One of them has got a little smaller culvert and grass, or either larger or the same. So the only one that went down was ten. There was three culverts there, one failed, so rather than dig it out or anything, we just plugged it and now there's only two function.
Until we get our stuff in.
Yep.
So we got a whole bunch of good stuff.
Yeah, so we got a lot of good stuff.
I hate to have to have everything blowed out again and bring all that gravel and stuff back into the hill. You can just dig it out and put it back, right?
Yeah, all, all four of them, yeah. Along with that, we'll have to advertise for engineering on these. That's what the RFP is talking about for the bridge. In order to get it included on federal dollars, get your engineering included on federal dollars, you have to solicit for engineering firms to do the. engineering firms to do the interviews and all that, so with any luck, we could do all of them at the same time, but I couldn't talk to Bismarck about that yet either. Sometimes they allow us to do all, all the projects on one R F P, and a bunch of similar organizations pretty common now.
Okay. And we'll, we'll just wait for the updated list at the next meeting, good with that?
Sounds good, yep. I'll see, but the last last thing I have is an ad in the paper for going on road ditches. A lot of information on bottom, that sheet is correct, we don't pay attention to that, but the, 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 word again, the ad itself, that's how it will be in the paper. So we just need a motion, uh, so we can put this into the paper.
I'll make a motion.
And this is just to cut county stuff?
No, it's township stuff.
Yep, everything?
We actually do our own on accounting, so but, according to the century code, it's up to the county, it's the county's responsibility to put the ad in the paper for the townships.
Okay, we have a motion in a second then to advertise for fall road going and to put the ad in the paper. Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side, motion carries.
That's all I have, unless you have something to add.
Good, Kevin? Okay, thanks Kevin, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, up next, we have joint powers agreement, but we don't have a updated joint powers agreement back yet, so we'll have to push that on finish business then, uh, just the next meeting again when, uh, hopefully it will be available too. Uh, so we'll just roll it into new business, uh, V A credit abatements.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the two credit abatements, I believe we have a panelists, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side, motion carries. Letter of transfer. This is related to the drone.
Yes.
Funding.
Move to approve, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve letter of transfer, transfer funds, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side, motion carries. And lastly, a site authorization for the territory.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve that, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side, motion carries. Okay, visitors and delegations. Pregnant, nonstop thought, so we're good to go. Okay, uh, portfolios, start with, Mr. Bull.
Um, we did not meet the last month, so I don't really have anything to measure account for the treasurers, still making money, not losing money, so that's looking good.
Well, you don't have to pull it earlier, right?
And, I seen in, paid work, we, um, paid for, we did like thirteen hundred, um, that one, a recorded office.
Oh, yes, 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 yep, yep, yep.
So that's still going good, but other than that?
Okay, very good. Mr. Frith?
Well, we heard from Sarah on the N D S U stuff. Uh, we got from Christie, uh, we were the tax office, we're down for education on Bismarck for the tax seminar, um, assessing all that kind of good stuff, and they've been busy out in the county, measuring, uh, measuring buildings and, and lots, uh, other than that, we don't have a whole lot more.
Okay, Mr. Lisa?
Um, of course, uh, let's say, um, La Crete Heritage Center, um, still has problems with their group, they were getting waiting on bid, um, I think it was a lot of money. I don't know, did they put anything in?
They did.
For ARPA, okay, I don't know, yes.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot, yeah. Um, they do have here September eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth, they have a North Dakota Art Gallery Association. And they've had a lot of traffic through, so they've been quite busy. Um, treasurer's office, we got our, um, estimates out. Um, haven't heard too much back on that. Um, we do have some annexations that are brewing. Um, one is in Crary, I want to move it to Lakota. So it's in Devil's Lake School District, wanting to move to Lakota, their kids go there, um, we picked up the application on Friday. We discussed it a little bit, so we'll see where that goes. Um, I also got a phone call from Frank Schill out of Edmore looking at maybe dissolving, so we'll, um, I will be working with him. I also would like some help, or Candy, we talked about this, um, we need to fill on the board, the reorganization and dissolving board, we need to find people that know, you know, that worked with school districts or, because this is all coming up in the next year to two years, so we need to find some people. Frank Schill also was gonna look for some people that may wanna sit on that board because we have, um, probably over. So we need to look for some people.
It's been kind of a long road of work because there hasn't been any.
There hasn't, and it's coming.
Probably since what, Crary?
Um, we did one, I just did one about a year ago that I'm, it was in Wells County, so I moved six quarters of land.
Oh, yeah, small land, I was saying, but, but no, no large dissolution probably since the Crary district.
Probably, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and that's gonna be a much longer.
That was another one. Um, so those are the things we need to look, to find some individuals that have a little knowledge and would like to sit on there.
I have a question about that group.
About what?
The city above the roof for the building.
Oh, the La Crete Heritage?
How come they don't qualify for the grant when other businesses in county qualify for them?
Um, just need, I don't guess.
Well, I know Creative Impressions got a brand new roof on their building and they paid minimal isn't that downtown, doesn't it qualify for those grants?
I, I guess.
As a downtown entity.
Trying to think of how that functions. There, there's no grant though, all it is, is a, like a in-kind lieu type thing where you can get financing
Oh.
through, uh, like how the Ford Devil's Lake program worked was, you could use the street projects as collateral basically to go to the bank in North Dakota to get a long-term loan interest loan. But there was no specific grant, there's facade grants and stuff like that, but nothing that I know of, don't, might be speaking incorrectly, but nothing that I know of for like roofs and stuff like that.
Oh, absolutely.
But maybe since it's a historic building, I don't know, maybe there's some type of a grant out there for that, I don't know, since it's in a historic district or, there's different ways.
And I know Lisa's really on this, I mean, she's.
Well, I'm not saying she's not, but I'm just reaching out to.
Yeah, and I don't know business versus a nonprofit, I, that's a good question, that's worth delving into to see, maybe talk to them and see how they did it, maybe it would be ready to, to find some grant money or something, that'd be good, good, good.
But it seems like that roof problem did an issue for ever, years and years, you know? I can't remember not talking about it.
Yeah, since I've been here.
Yeah, so.
And it seems like some people don't, like some roofers don't even want, they don't want nothing to do with it.
Right.
Well. Well, it's, it's a very, and I've, I've seen the ARPA documentation, so seeing some of the bits from the, there's a couple of different companies and it's a different style roof, you know, like most of the roofs in downtown are just a flat roof and, you know, but this has flat roof structure, it has drains down into the building, it has that copper type setup that drops over the edges and it's, it's, it's a whole nother beast, I think, and that's why a lot of people don't wanna touch it, because they don't wanna have to be liable if they don't get it right. That's what it comes down to. Anyway, yeah, but it's, yeah, find us some information, that'd be, that'd be worthwhile.
You think so they could just peak the bill and it'd be done, right?
Yeah, I don't think we could do that.
I know, but.
Let's just, just throw a roof on top of that thing, it'll be okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, there's a brand.
Thank you.
Senior rails is doing good. We're finishing, just watch real soon, shortage, so, in the next month. How about the jail, my ass and Steve were there last week, I had a note, put a closeout when they left and ended up happy with how things were going. Around fifty million dollars, and we think we're gonna stay there for a while, maybe go up some more, so. Uh, capital's doing fine, overall, facilities seem to be upbeat, so I think around a meg.
Close to full staff, getting there?
Yeah, I think they're fifteen a day that I just see them there.
That's not bad considering where we were.
Yeah. And they had more on the list for interviews, I think. And, we, a lot better, they did brought all the prison rig back, they got a stand and all that.
Okay, good point.
But they're having a whole night's stand on their fifty. They just, it's not gonna go to twenty and all that, so.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Jeff, three.
That, that, that fifty limit is gonna be tough regardless, but I'd much rather have fifty than a ninety-six hour hold.
Three.
It takes a lot of stress, I think, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the, the cost of the other places wasn't even that exorbitant if you looked at the bill, but the constantly running people back and forth all over the place is just, that adds a massive amount of cost when you got people on the road constantly, so that's all hitting that down figure.
Her name's Kelly.
Good. Okay, anything else?
Oh.
All right, from my perspective, uh, I guess from our last meeting, I haven't had a former Devil's Lake meeting or a library board, but we meet tomorrow. Um, social services, we met after our last meeting, um, pretty standard, other than, and talking about, uh, obviously everyone I'm sure saw in the paper that human services and health department are combining into one big department. So there's been, I wouldn't say hiccups, which is, you know, different contact points and things like that, and, and, uh, the bureaucracy's gonna change a little bit. The main thing that we talked a lot about at our meeting was, I think we talked about here, employment, trying to draw people and how, and, and the thing that Rhonda and, uh, her staff were talking about was they hire a lot of young social workers that are right out of college, and the younger social workers don't seem to care about our benefits package. They just, they, they want, where's the cash? What's my salary? See, they said, when you, when you tell them what the benefits package is, their eyes just glaze over. They don't want, because at this point in time in their life, they don't care if they have full health insurance or a 401 K or, or, you know, or a N D P R's pension retirement, that kind of thing, so, and they're kind of hamstrung because of the state not having their salary compression study done, so she said that's been a huge issue, it's not just our district, it's everywhere, so. They're continuing to try to staff up, but, you know, the minute, it's no different than anything else, but they get suddenly trained, you get them good, and they go someplace else to a bigger city. So it's a constant hire and hire and hire and hire and try to get people in place and hopefully they're gonna stay here and set some roots down, so. So, that's important.
Did they indicate what that's gonna do to, uh, local public health?
The combination?
Yeah.
No, we, I haven't had any discussions on that at all anywhere, to be honest.
Because if, if Department of Health is combining with Human Services, I would imagine that at some point that it's gonna be connected somehow?
Well, I think there's still.
Maybe one end goal?
I, that's a good question, I don't know, I mean, they're calling the whole thing Health and Human Services now, I believe. I think they're still planning to run the local public entity separately, hey, we got, we got maybe an answer back there.
Yes, because we're the Department of Health with the Department of Emergency Services, so we're not a department anymore, we're a division. Same with the Department of Public Health, a division of Public Health, everybody's under this, they got moved to one big office. So they're all, it's the same, the same entities, but it's the same entities working with their own agencies.
Yeah, I, I think part of the thought process behind it was, and it's not necessarily a bad one, is that if you put them all under one department head, they work together so closely on so many things already that you can basically go out and say, you know, kind of force some of those synergy, that I think is kind of the thought process behind it, I guess that remains to be seen. We'll see how things run as it goes, I guess, but, uh, I don't think from, at least from our discussions of social service, I don't think it's gonna change anything locally, it's gonna be kind of business as usual and, and hopefully we can, but we'll see what happens, I guess, long term, but anyway. Sure, if you have anything else, uh, whole ARPA committee, uh, we, the deadline for the grant applications was thirty first August, first September, I can't remember the exact date, but end of the month, um, and we are meeting next
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, so what's that? I don't even know what date it is anymore. So two weeks from now. Right? The morning of the next meeting, right? Coming up.
No, Friday.
Friday, God, I'm losing my mind. Friday the sixteenth, we're meeting at eight.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty. Um, and if anybody wants a copy of, of, uh, Candy has a compiled Google document of everybody that's put in an application. Uh, just so you guys can do some homework too, so when it, the thought process is, we'll sit down on the sixteenth, try to narrow it down, and then bring, um, that list to the commission on the twentieth for first perusal, so to speak, it doesn't necessarily, we have to make any decisions that day or anything. Um, my thought was, I wanted to get it in front of the commission as a whole, uh, previous to us having to approve a budget. So that way, if we needed to take some of those dollars, or we can make that split to roll them back into the budget or whatever, so we have some options. Um, and then the other question I would have, but not really in ARPA is, you know, what, are, are we gonna have any clarity by October, if we're gonna get the Prairie Dog funds, or are we pretty sure, we're pretty sure we're getting them, but you know, because that's gonna affect how we structure the budget for next year too, because I mean, if we wanted to maybe find a little bit of leeway to pull down a little bit, that would be the place we'd have to do it, is if we had those Prairie Dog funds. So, uh, but we'll have some more clarity here hopefully in the next month or so.
What do you think, Kevin, you think it'll be?
I think there will, unless it's some crashes, oil industry crashes, that, that would be.
That's probably, you never know, crap can happen overnight, spirals the wrong way, you never know, it can happen. But, yeah, anyway, so we'll be meeting on the sixteenth, Candy has a good spreadsheet, there was about, what, three million dollars probably worth of asks for the concept of what we were going with, one million dollars or whatever, so, and we're working on an internal county sheet as well. So that we'll have a dollar figure, kind of, well, at least a ballpark idea of what we think we would need to spend inside the courthouse for improvements and upgrades, some of the things we've talked about here in the past. Obviously, generator and lighting upgrades, anything like that, clean your deck, so those kind of things. So we're trying to have a list put together for that meeting too, so that everybody can kind of get a pretty look of what we're looking at, so we can kind of figure out how we wanna divvy up those funds. So, more to come on that. Um, from there, don't think I have anything else, County Housing Authority, M F, but everything's going pretty well there. People are actually starting to move again before winter time, so that's good, we're getting some stuff filled up. Uh, other than that, I think that's all I have.
Um, and I guess I did, Kevin, did you, do you have anything more on that string crossing?
Yes, we finally got our, our determination for our string crossing on two bridges from the state. And now we're gonna meet with the water board, I don't know if you know this, but at, at our next meeting and determine what size culverts go in there. And we won't be doing those till next year, so we're, we're not really under the gun on this, but that way we can get them ordered under the old price of culverts. And take delivery next spring or something.
Where's this for?
Uh, we have two bridges left that we need to take out.
Oh, this is for the bridges for next year's project, okay.
The state finally got, state water board finally got our, uh, water determination flows through there.
All of that, that was like, what, eighteen months or something?
Yep, it goes.
Thirteen anyway, so.
Oh, sure they'll try.
On another note, we had our final, uh, meeting of the interim legislative committee on water drainage, uh, the one that I was representing the association of counties on. Uh, goal on that was to combine the two century codes that deal with water drainage and assessment projects within the within the state and the water resource districts, um, there was two different century codes and trying to combine that language into one. And main goal into that was, uh, not creating any more burden for counties. Um, which, uh, I think we've, we've gotten a pretty good, uh, pretty good language on, on one bill, there was, there was a, a couple of combinations, one was the, the com- combining of those two century codes. And then the other one was on, uh, project cost assessments or, um, cost benefit analysis through the state water commissions or the. through the state water commissions or the state department of water resource, they have come up with a cost benefit analysis, an economic analysis on projects. The legislature has a million dollar threshold on requiring that, uh, water commission has an administrative policy to do, uh, projects, anything over two hundred thousand dollars would require that. Trying to iron out some differences there, um, and so initially, they have all of those bills combined into one. We were able to get the benefit cost analysis separated into its own, own bill, because I think there's a lot of, uh, consternation amongst that one, because I think it, um, could create some issues on local funding on projects. Uh, not just water, but other types of projects as well as, so, um, there's some language that needs to be ironed out and worked out on that, and and one of the things that I don't think, uh, the economists from the water, uh, looks at the benefit of long-term improvements to soil crop qualities as drainage occurs, proper drainage, water management on, on fields, whether the tile drainage, subsurface drainage, um, into an existing roadway or, or ditch, or different things like that. The biggest thing that I wanted to convey to them was keeping water away from our roads. Um, I don't allow it to sit along county or township roads because that just undermines the integrity of that road bed. And so, if we can keep water moving properly and, and keep it away from our road ditches, I think, better.
Yep.
Um, I, I don't think we did any harm, uh, being on that committee, but, and hope not. But what that, and now those two draft bills will go through legislative council to make sure that there's no conflicts or, um, with any other existing state laws, they'll introduce them into the legislature, uh, beginning of the session, and then they'll be debated and, uh, it changed, changed probably drastically before the plan to get done and, uh, signed come next, next April, at the time period, but.
Gave them a place to start though.
We gave them a place to start and, and, you know, hopefully you can end some of that confusion by having two different century codes dealing with water drainage, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, anything else for the, for the order?
I got a couple of things, uh, just to clarify on the, uh, paper patches, we're gonna be doing the, the railroad tracks by the end as a project, uh, the bridge on the Woods Run Road approaches onto that bridge, then there's two, uh, spots that are breaking up closer to Highway Two.
Yeah, there's some up north there, yeah.
Yeah, and then the third one was south of Roarville, south of, yeah, Roarville. There's a, a spot where the wheel ruts are getting really bad and the water sits in the wheel ruts, so those, those three are the main ones.
Do you have the ability to add any?
We can.
Uh, right south of the old St. Benedict's Church there, where that was.
You know what, that's on my.
Yes, but I kind of figured it was on your list, but it's just a small spot, but we should do something about that, because that hole is getting pretty, I mean, all of us locals know how to drive around it.
Yeah.
But, if you happen to be passing somebody at the same time, that's, that thing's getting pretty, pretty nasty.
So, that would be the fourth spot.
Yeah.
I think you talked about it, but about a mile south of Highway Two on the red road.
Yeah, breaking up on the east side of the road there.
Yep. Two places there, yeah.
I know, that's where the St. Benedict Church is, I've gotten a few calls on the hole.
And I told people, I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna do it when we paper patch, but we're just waiting for the paper patching to happen, and we don't do our own, so we're, we're waiting for it.
What Strata told me is they gotta get this stuff in Devil's Lake done first, and then we're next on the list.
That, that's, that's, so, so the same minute is there, is strange, because we ground it down, because it pumped, then we ground it down, and now it's creating a hole because before you'd hop over the top of the dog, I think, so, it's strange.
Culvert, yeah?
Yeah, but we, we've looked at the culvert multiple times, and the culvert looks good, so, it's, it's weird, it just apparently frosted and, and when we cut it down, it must have decided to die, I don't know, frost is some weird thing.
And the other thing, um, the October, first of October meetings, they're in the convention, I don't know, for changing the dates or?
Next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
That's I, well, the first meeting, October next week.
Do you know what date, Mike, I got a plan, that week, I'm gonna bring over.
Probably Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, I think so.
Very much, Friday?
Friday is one.
Six. I think, yeah, we usually do it on Thursday.
Six in the morning.
Sure. Six in the morning? Sure.
I don't think, uh, six in the morning, no, six in the morning. Oh, I thought you meant six AM, I was like, I'll do six AM.
Six AM.
I have one for three too, let's get this thing knocked out. Be home, be home with a donut, and then by eight, we. All right, anything else? Make sure I skip anything. Seeing nothing? You heard her?